No.
Well, it will be just talking with friends.
Not in camera.
Four questions? No.
Good evening. Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Welcome to the City of Whittier's Meet the Candidates Night for this upcoming city election, which is being held on October 7th, Tuesday, October 7th. You'll be in this room from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so stop by. Or early absentee in-person voting is happening now, so you can come by the city office anytime during regular business hours, 8:00 a.m. till noon and 1:00 p.m. till 5:00, and cast your vote early. This event is designed to give community members a chance to hear directly from the candidates in a fair and respectful setting. So here's how tonight's going to work. We'll start with short introductions from each candidate. Feel free to take whichever seat you'd like. No one's drunk the water yet, I promise. Then each candidate will answer a set of... Well, the candidates will rotate as they answer a set of prepared questions that were shared in advance. After that, we'll move into a brief audience question and answers, with time permitting. And finally, each candidate will have a minute for... A chance for a one-minute closing statement. To keep things fair and hopefully relatively on time, each candidate will have equal speaking time. We'll rotate the order of responses, so no one always goes first or last. And then the Audience Question and Answer Session will be based on questions submitted in writing. So if you'd like to ask a question, like about hair color, please write it down and place it in the box on the table just outside the door. Questions will be collected and read aloud by moi at the time that we do that. So we're asking everyone to remain respectful, please. No interruptions, no cross-talk or personal attacks. Let's just focus on ideas and priorities for Whittier's future. So with that, let's begin with introductions. Each of you will have up to two minutes to share a bit about your background. Would anyone like to go first? Okay. Oh, wait, hold on. And then make sure that you grab the microphone and that it is not muted. Apologies.
Good evening. My name is Lori Borg, and I'm running for City Council, CG. Many of you know me as Ms. Lori, the preschool teacher. And before that, I was a dental assistant for 30 years. I moved to Whittier about a year and a half ago and have not regretted a day of it. I have two older daughters that live in Juneau, and I'm just over the moon excited to see all the things that are coming down the pipe for Whittier.
Good evening. My name's Jamie Loane. I... My husband and I moved here about six years ago, and I am a local business owner and involved in lots of different projects around town. I'm excited to be here.
Hi there. My name's Dan Blair. I've been here for 30 years. I predated the road. I don't understand why they brought the road up. Why fix something that's not broken? But anyway, it is what it is. I feel that I'm happy to represent my community. I've done it for a number of years, long enough to not remember how many years. We have lots of opportunity that's before us, and I would like to bring to bear the experience that I've accumulated over the years as a council member and as a community member. When I came here, I had a successful opportunity in my youth to have a fantastic entrepreneur experience, and it's been one of my passions to allow local community members to also experience that. It's transformative, and I'm excited that we are at this point in which our community is going to have that as an experience. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, now on to the prepared questions. Each candidate was provided these in advance, and we'll have two minutes to respond. So, starting with the first question. And we'll start with Ms. Loane for this one, and then just keep going in our same order, if that's all right. What inspired you to run for City Council and serve our community here in Whittier?
So I have tried to... I wrote some notes down just to try to keep my questions short. And in short, I am inspired because I love this place. I've even built a local business around just sharing the history and what it's like, our daily life here, and special things about it with visitors. Having lived here for a few years now, I care about what happens to this place, whether I'm still here or not. I care about the people that live here. And there's so many unique things about Whittier, our history, our diversity, and we have so much to offer. And I do have the ability to listen to people, and I have the energy to take people's ideas and make them a reality. I also feel that I can speak up loudly for residents in times where our voices get drowned out, whether it's by sheer numbers or just a lot of other user groups. And I feel like I can do that with... While also working together, not alienating other entities or user groups.
Thanks, Ms. Loane. Mr. Blair, would you like to speak next?
So I actually was approached by another council member, had no inkling of what I was stepping into, but I rapidly learned that being the voice of the community is extremely important, and I have strived to do that and will continue to strive to do that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Ms. Borg?
I too wrote down some cards, but those... I thought the cards might be for me, but I think they're for you because when I'm passionate about things, I tend to run on a little bit. So what inspired me to run? When I came here a year and a half ago, the people of Whittier. The people of Whittier opened me with... Opened their arms to me and made me feel like part of the family. I have a love for Whittier and a belief in its future. This isn't about politics for me. It's about service and respect, helping our city grow in a way that honors the people that call it home.
Thank you. Moving on to question number two. Mr. Blair, you'll start us off with this one. Can you briefly outline your relevant experience or background that you believe makes you a strong candidate for City Council?
Yeah, I may have dipped into this a little early, but you know, I have experience in a lot of areas that allow me to draw on that experience to make decisions. And I have a very strong sense of right and wrong. And to that extent, I think it's valuable to bring that to bear in council because it is very important to do the next right thing. And for me, the next right thing is bringing much-needed infrastructure and... For our community and allow them to enjoy the same things that we find in more developed communities. So I do look at things in other communities and try and work out how we can best bring those forward to us.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Ms. Borg?
Before teaching, I worked in a dental office for 30 years, 26 of them in the same office. That taught me patience, problem-solving, and how to serve people. I think all three of these make a good council member. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and work with residents, the administration, and the council to get things done and move Whittier forward.
Thank you, Ms. Borg. Ms. Loane?
I do have a background. I have a double major in international relations and political science. So I've always been interested in how communities can trickle up and participate effectively in local government. I do know that a degree is not everything. You do have to have actual experience. So when I moved to Whittier, I immediately got involved in things like parks and rec, ports and harbor, planning and zoning, the HOA, Chamber of Commerce. I substitute teach at the school. And I'm a business owner, and I also help out at a lot of other local businesses, especially in the summer when they need help. And I love to plan community events, like some of the things that we've been doing for our holidays, helping with the wish-wash, getting live music here, things for our community to enjoy because it is not... I don't think it's all about statutes and laws and everything. Like, we should be able to be successful, but also live together. So I did those things not with the goal of getting on council, but with the goal of just truly understanding my community and the people that live here. So I think I have a pretty well-rounded picture at this point of everybody here.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next question, since we have new people who've joined us since the beginning, I just want to remind everyone that the audience Q and A will come after we have the candidates answer these pre-prepared questions. And they will be chosen from the box outside the door of written questions. So if you have questions that you think of as this progresses, please feel free to step out and write that down. Okay, on to the next question. Ms. Borg, you are starting with this one. What do you see as the most significant challenges currently facing our town? And how do you plan to address them if elected?
I thought on this question a lot over this last week. I thought on this question a lot over the last week. I wanted to say the railroad, which is an important challenge, as we all know. But my answer is the relationship between the council and the administration. We can't move the city forward when we are pulling in two different directions. So if I'm elected, I'll do everything in my power to fix that problem with the help of both of them.
Thank you, Ms. Borg. Ms. Loane?
I too thought about this a lot, and I think, looking around, we can all agree, like, I mean, we're all here because we love Whittier, but there are some underutilized spaces and things that we could clean up. I would... I would think that, you know, residents need green and safe places to be outside, you know, whether it's parks, trails, pavilions, things like that, to enjoy our own home, as well as eventually having a solid plan for future growth of things like housing. I also believe that a huge hurdle that could become a great asset to us is our variety of user groups. I mentioned before that oftentimes, I feel like sometimes residents' wants and needs can get drowned out, or they're just often different from a user... From another user group, and those coming to Whittier. If we can work together and elevate what residents want our own town to be, I think that that would also help provide adequate resources for other users. I believe we would start to see more overlapping of these groups, such as visitors frequently... Frequenting more local businesses or local spots, and then residents getting to also enjoy more infrastructure. A huge part of making these things successful, I believe, is continuing to work on zoning and getting our land from the railroad. And I believe that, you know, now we're a real community, and having the ability to make these necessary decisions starts with owning our own city, and we need involvement and input.
Thank you, Ms. Loane. Mr. Blair?
Um, well, by far, the most important thing, I think, for our community is a successful negotiation with Alaska Railroad in which we convert the master lease into fee-simple land for the community. It allows us to exercise the control necessary to provide a lot of the infrastructure needed to deal with the influx of more cruise ships and also provide our community with home-field advantage that we currently don't have. You know, one of the things that people are always amazed when they come here is the lack of residential housing. I think how we go about that... I know there are several communities that have been much... Much more successful than us at creating housing that is specifically targeted for local residents. And so there's areas where we can look at that for our success. Getting the land from the railroad allows us the space and land necessary in which we can plan and create opportunities for local residents and for, you know, employees for other businesses to make us a more desirable location for our visitors. We have 700,000 approximately a year, and it'd be great to be able to offer them more diversity and services than we currently offer. That's it.
You have excellent timing. That was exactly two minutes. Okay. Question number four, and Ms. Loane, you'll be starting this one. In your opinion, what are the top priorities for promoting economic growth and sustainable development in our small town?
In one word, I would say balance, but I have a small bullet list. First would be zoning and owning our land and having the ability to lease space for local businesses. The second would be managing our infrastructure, and that would... I know that sounds broad, but that means... To me, that means taking care of what we already have and while also making necessary upgrades and fixing and adequately caring for spaces in our community without duplicating them because I think even if we grow, we still are... We still have limited space. I'd love to have, like, getting more people involved in special projects and commissions about, you know, things that they're passionate about as individuals, diversifying our upgrades. So finding specific grants for even things that we deem small, like bike racks, kayak racks, signage, artwork, things like that. And preserving our culture and history so that we keep Whittier's heart. I think Whittier is already special, and people will see that. And I think we can implement good ideas and growth without becoming unrecognizable.
Thank you, Ms. Loane. Mr. Blair?
So this is a super-important topic. I'm constantly looking at other communities in ways that they provide opportunities for locals that don't have a lot of capital, but they have an enormous amount of experience and talent. And towards that end, that's why I mentioned food courts. It's a way to lower the cost of getting into business. I know that there are a lot of operating costs that the current harbor district has to incur. If we can reduce that and make it so that more people can participate, whatever their skill is, arts and craft, food, a particular service, it would benefit us all. You know, having... You know, we lost our Chinese food, so restaurant. It'd be nice to have two or three different types of food when we decide to go out on the town. And, you know, it's another opportunity for us to socialize. So getting that cost down, and I know that Jackie's looking at ways to provide educational experiences to make sure that their first experience in entrepreneurship is a positive one. So it's a huge deal, and I'm looking forward to participating and solving that and making it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Ms. Borg?
I think the top priority is resolving the railroad. The priority is resolving the railroad land deal. So we need local control to plant growth, attract business, and improve our waterfront. Strong public-private partnerships supporting tourism and keeping our town safe and welcoming. If we don't do this, our hands are going to be kind of tied. So I think that's the number-one priority for me.
Thank you. Last prepared question. We are going to have lots of time for question and answers from the audience. So transparency and accountability build trust in local government. How do you plan to ensure openness and decision-making processes and communicate effectively with residents? Mr. Blair, you start this one.
So every year, I ask the same question, and for whatever reason, the result isn't exactly what I'd like. And that question is, when are we going to do a comprehensive plan? I know when council voted to bring in the second cruise ship terminal, at that time, we committed as a council to allow a comprehensive plan so that the public, the local residents of Whittier, could bring forward their ideas and their wants and to deal with the significant changes that we are currently seeing. That hasn't happened yet, but as far as transparency, I, you know, being on the council, one of the things I'm wrestling with is that we're moving through so many decisions so quickly. Some of those decisions involve going into executive session. Well, when we come out of executive session, it'd be really nice to have something in writing to explain to us when that information no longer needs to be, you know, exclusive to council. It's really important to bring that out as soon as possible. One, so the community can realize the decisions we made and agree with or don't agree with us. And two, it needs to be out there because there may be business opportunities that the community is missing out on. So I'd like to bring that forward and have a better mechanism in which we share information as soon as possible once it's no longer needed to be in executive session. And then as far as trust in the local government, my ideas on that are we need to encourage the administration to update their... We have how HR works. And to that end, Jackie did hire an independent HR, which is a great first step.
Mr. Blair, if you could... You reached your two minutes. If you could wrap up your comments?
Okay.
Thank you. You can finish that sentence.
Oh.
That's what I meant by wrap-up apologies.
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Borg?
I think transparency and accountability means that the residents, the council, and the administration have the same information and have a chance to be heard. I'll push for clear communication and teamwork so that our decisions are consistent, accessible, and rooted in trust.
Thank you. And Ms. Loane?
So I try my best to operate openly. I recognize that as a council member, my constituents are the entire community, not just a certain group of you. I do love to have one-on-one talks and hear people out and hear their stories and their opinions, but I'm also committed to making sure that I use the proper channels to ask questions, submit my intentions, and share my thoughts. And I'm committed to being honest and recusing myself from a topic if there's a chance for it to even appear that I have a special interest.
Thank you, Ms. Loane. Could we pause for just a moment and give our candidates a round of applause? Because without the candidates being here, it would not be a "Meet Your Candidates Tonight." And let's... Since we have so much time, let's take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 6:30. Put in your last thoughts for questions, and I'll gather those and organize them for our next session. Welcome back. Welcome back. Thank you for taking a break for me. Okay, we received many, many questions, and I really appreciate everyone for contributing questions because like not having council candidates for a council discussion, an audience Q and A is nothing without audience questions. So we won't be able to get through all of these. I apologize. But we will try to make it through some of them. Don't feel rushed, though. You don't need to rush your answers. We will still do two minutes per response, just to keep things succinct. And, okay, this one seems fun, so we'll start with this one as a, you know, icebreaker. As we move into, as we hope to move into the future, describe a technology that you use in your daily life that was invented in the last 10 years. And let me know if you need me to reread it.
Describe a what?
Describe a technology that you use in your daily life that was invented in the last 10 years.
Wow.
I'll let whoever wants to go first go first on this one.
I guess this, I mean, I think it's the last 10 years. This isn't super crazy, but I would say like QR codes and things like that, being able to share information. But I envision something like that people could scan at the tunnel while they're waiting when we eventually get service out there and, you know, businesses or the city could list events or what's happening or things like that. Or even like on some of the artwork, I know the artists that painted our barriers put a QR code in the corner where you can look at her other art projects and things like that and just share information. So that would be my first thought.
I know the last two weeks I've used Chat GPT, chat cheat, GPT, chat GPT, a lot. I'm a little bit of AI, so I think those two things I've used in the last two weeks a lot. So those are my answers.
So I will say QR codes are much more prevalent. They have been around for a while. But I also am finding some uses for AI. I have to do a lot of cross-checking for me to convince myself that they're not sending me down the wrong path. Some of these technologies, I haven't, they may have been around for more than 10 years, but I'm just starting to use them. Some of these, like LEDs are much more useful. And solar panels have been way useful. And I know they've been around, but they're much more functional now. Electric fences are marvelous for keeping bears away. Otherwise, I wouldn't be able to have my ducks and geese. So I, I don't know. Google's been around too long.
Thank you for that. Okay, into some tougher stuff. Let's go with what have you championed personally as a council member that helped the community? And if you haven't yet been on council, what is your single most important thing to accomplish for Whittier? Again, I will happily reread it if you want me to reread it even before you speak. One more time?
Nope, no, it's not good.
You're good? Okay, I'll reread it in a minute. Go ahead.
So I have championed listening to my community. I have multiple times advocated for comprehensive plan updates. I have looked, tried to look at transparency and make sure that it's provided to the community as well as, you know, call things out when I don't feel that we have enough public posting or whatever. I mean, it's really important to get feedback from the community. And, you know, some of it may be that I'm technologically challenged, but the, you know, just simple posting on bulletin boards as many places as we can in town to give everybody the opportunity to bring their voice and their ideas forward. It's really important. I've been, you know, a couple of times I've been talked to by someone that's frustrated and they didn't feel they had the opportunity to give out their ideas. So rightly or wrongly, I really champion the ability to make sure people are given the opportunity to bring their voice forward.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Anyone want to volunteer to go next? Yes, I will.
Thank you.
What have you championed personally as a council member that helped the community? And if you haven't yet been on council, what is your single most important thing to accomplish for Whittier?
I think my single most accompli- accomplishment would be, I want to be a council member that people can come to, that know they're going to be heard. I want people to know what I say, I mean. I'll show up. I want to make sure that people know that I've read my packet and I know what I'm talking about after I read my packet. I mean, I haven't been here very long, but I have gone through a bunch of packets lately. But I just want to, I just want to be a council member that always has our residents in mind, our council in mind, and our administration in mind. And I'd love to see all three of those working together while I'm on council.
So I have only been on council, I think, for two meetings. But as far as the community goes, I think that my biggest hope is that no matter what we're doing, whether it's, you know, acquiring land or making new opportunities or new infrastructure or whatever that is, that it's all driving towards our quality of life. I think, I least hope, that being involved and talking with people that I've hopefully driven more community involvement for people that maybe did not think that they were fit or able to participate. I've worked really hard since we moved here on diversifying our recreation. Again, like whether that's bike riding or hiking or kayaking or just spending time with each other, like events like Wish Wash and music and also Health Week, trying to educate not just adults but kids on, you know, how to live a healthy life and how to be involved in their community. So that's important.
Thank you. Okay, next question. What's your plan for Whittier's land and housing needs? Whoever wants to start, feel free.
So regardless of how much land we're able to purchase from the railroad, we will never have enough land. I mean, it's part of the consequences of living in a fjord. So to be able to make sure, to maximize the number of housing opportunities for locals, I will be looking at other communities that have successfully deployed various, multiple, Juno has deployed multiple avenues to provide local housing and employee housing due to their challenges. Some of them worked out better than others. Also, you know, any type of federal or state agencies that would be able to assist us either through grants or maybe provide us different ideas on how to allow local community members to get their first house. Or anyway, it's a challenge. It's a challenge all over the state of Alaska, and it's got to be second only to buy in that land from the railroad. So it's, how we go about and accomplish that in a fair and transparent way is super important, and I'm looking forward to helping the community tackle that.
If we're able to get our, the land from the railroad, I'll be looking at public and private partnerships to come in and help us. Getting rid of the Buckner Building is going to free up a lot of land up there. That'd be nice to put housing up there. Maybe on the side of the BTI Building, but we need to get that land from the railroad. And keeping that conversation and that relationship going in a positive direction is what we need to do. And then bringing in the public and private people to help us. And that's what I would do.
I would say my answer also pertains or like is a mix of both of those that went before me. I think that obviously we need the land first. Secondly, careful zoning and planning because we could have all the land we want. But if we mess up our zoning and our future plans, then we'll have a lot of spaces that won't be used to their best, to their best use, I guess. One way to do that is to do, I don't know if mixed use is the right word, but Mr. Blair mentioned Juno. I grew up in Juno and especially downtown is small and tight, but you see businesses downstairs and apartments upstairs, things like that. And we can get some of those developments by getting developer partnerships. You know, like Ms. Borg mentioned, partnering with different developers to make sure that we're using our space for as many things as possible.
Thank you. Next question. Should the costs of running and growing the city be jointly paid by all? Currently, the businesses pay the lion's share of the expense. Will you investigate spreading the costs, such as increasing sales tax or property tax?
So.
Yep, go ahead. Yeah.
I'm a little, don't really understand how businesses feel they carry the lion's share. I mean, all of our taxes are set up for collect and remit. All of the fees are collect and remit. The people that are carrying that load are the tourists, the 700,000 visitors. So, you know, I'd like to invite those people who feel that they're carrying something to maybe take a step back. You're in Whittier. You're given the opportunity to collect that by having a successful business. So I operate a business. I don't feel that collecting and remitting is a burden. I think it's an opportunity to be able to operate a business in our community. And it would be lovely if businesses would share their experiences with new potential business owners so that they too can participate in a living wage.
I'm not as well-versed on this one as maybe Jamie and Megan Blair. But maybe the transportation fee and the ground tax fee, or the ground fee, maybe we can do a special tax with those. Take a little bit out of those, one or two percent to cover that. I do feel that everybody living here should pay their share. But I, to answer this question, I would have to just delve a little deeper into it because I haven't really, I really haven't investigated too much into this. But I think my answer would be that if you live in Whittier, you need to pay your fair share.
Yeah, again, a little bit of along the same lines. I do believe that living in a place like this or running a business inherently has some extra costs. But I also don't think that we need to be suffocating those that are operating a business and bringing, you know, bringing the chance for visitors to spend money here to our town. I do think that, you know, the recently implemented sales tax is important because that does allow, hopefully, visitors to pay a little bit more of that than just a business. So hopefully, they're able to recoup some of that as prices of operating are higher. And I do think also that the sales tax, I believe just in the recent data that we hadn't seen a huge impact on residential spending. But I do believe that that is a start for having residents also have the share of paying taxes to the community. I too would like to be more educated on the topic, but I am also willing to listen because I know that there's multiple user groups that we're talking about here sometimes, like business, resident, you know, things like that. So I'd be very open to listening to people's experiences with that.
Thank you. Change is about the only constant in life. With that in mind, how do you feel about term limits for council members?
Well, that's interesting because a former council member mentioned that, I would say 15 years ago, and I was a little perplexed because of the number of council members that run unopposed, okay? And so if those who desire term limits, they really need to, like, to like, put their name on that so that we have more variety. I mean, I definitely would love to see more people get involved in all of our organizations, be it council or various committees. You know, there's, there's great opportunities to get involved and it, I don't understand how, if you get rid of the people that have run unopposed for nine years, how that promotes diversity. But those who are on council can make those decisions.
I do think that we have, just because we're a small community, we have a smaller number of people that are able to run or want to run or, or feel are qualified or, you know, there's many reasons why someone would or would not run. But I also do think that a term limit would not be a negative thing. And it might encourage other people to toss their name in the hat without feeling like, oh, I'm running against someone that's done this for longer than I've been alive or, you know, things like that. And maybe not as intimidated. And that was not a dig at anybody personally. See some laughs. That was not, okay, anyway.
You took my answer. I am for term, term limits. I think that it will bring people out of the community to run for different, for the different seats. We could be on council for 10, 15 years and stories get tired, you know? It's time that, you know, when you're done, you're done. And then let's get some new people in here, fresh blood, fresh ideas. So yeah, unfortunate moments.
Okay, and I think this will probably be our last question. There seems to be some animosity between some of the council and administration. What would you do to, to repair that and prevent future negative council and administration relations in the future?
As a preschool teacher, when they're three and four, we start teaching them respect. We hope they have it when they come to us. But I've watched these meetings for three years now. If I'm not here, I'm watching it on TV. The lack of respect that I watch over and over has to stop. And if I'm on council, I will stop it. If I hear it, I'll stop it. We cannot be up here acting like children. We have to act like adults. We have to, all of these problems that we have for this city are way more important than the animosity that's happening right now. So I'm just saying that I'm, if I'm elected as a city council member, that will stop in my seat and I will promote, I mean, ask that it stops on all the other seats.
Yep. And I would, I would add that we don't all have to be friends outside of this room or working, you know, on council, but we are at the end of the day all in this together. So I would just work really hard to keep that in the forefront of my mind and make sure that no matter what anyone's feelings are about each other personally, that we just do the right thing and the legal thing and what's before us, what's the best thing for all of us. So.
Well, if you think that we have animosity now, you should have been here before the road came through. Anyway, there's, I think there is probably a misconception that there's animosity. I think there's people that are passionate about their ideas and about their community. And sometimes there's, you know, frustration at not being able to, to bring things forward. I definitely have gotten much better at working through these things calmly. And Jackie's been really helpful. She's, we, we meet as frequently as possible when we're both feeling healthy and our significant others are healthy. We generally meet every Monday. So that has greatly helped reduce the frustration. I can see the direction administrations going and encourage them to, you know, bring forward other ideas as well as I'm better prepared to bring forward resolutions so that council can participate in giving direction.
Thank you, council members. Council member candidates, I apologize. Can't take off my other hat. Okay, so we'll close, we'll finish with brief closing remarks. So I know you guys have spoken a lot already this, this event, but this is your opportunity to just wrap up and give some closing thoughts if you would like to. Limited to a minute. So brief closing thoughts.
I would just like to say thank you. And I have the, the energy to listen and, and do what's right. And I will do what's right for the community.
I have to say thank you to everyone that supports me right now and is supporting me before this even. I haven't, I have not been in city government ever. I did not take this lightly when I decided to do this, but people came to me and said, you seem like you know what you're doing in a classroom. So how hard could this be? Sitting up here in front of adults and not three and four-year-olds is very hard. But again, thanks so much for the support. If I'm elected, I will do everything for the city I can. If I don't know something, I don't have an ego. I'll go, I'll ask, I'll ask questions. If I don't, if I, if you don't feel like I'm listening, shake my hand, shake my, shake me because I, I think I'm a pretty good listener and I want to listen to our residents. I just care about Whittier. I've only been here a short time, but boy, when I came through that tunnel, everybody just greeted me with open arms. And I feel like I want to do this service to them, give it to them, back to the community. So if I stay any longer, I'll start crying. So, okay.
Well, thanks everyone for showing up. I really appreciate your time to listen. And I'm looking forward to helping our community get more infrastructure and ways to enjoy our little community. You know, one of the, one of the passions is I see our school and fellow community, community members, they go out and they work in all kinds of weather. You know, everything from shoveling 20 feet of snow to just trying to ride a bicycle through some of this stuff. And the way I see it, if you, you put up with what Whittier can throw at you, I think you're somewhat entitled to some of the, the wealth that is coming to Whittier and an opportunity to participate in business and experience some of the variety that will be coming down our way.
Can we just give our candidates one more round of applause for their bravery for being here tonight? And I want to thank all of you for coming because like I said, this wouldn't be an event without you. And I wasn't sure if people were going to come, but I'm really glad that you all came and that you contributed so many questions. Apologies that we did not get through all of them. I just want to remind everyone, election day is Tuesday, October 7th. Polls will be open here in this room from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM. And from now until then, you could stop by the city offices and come in and do your absentee voting anytime that the office is open. 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, closed for one hour at lunch. So thank you for coming.